Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Matts-Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember John Park, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Look at there.
Oh, no.
It's good timing.
No cuffs.
No cuffs.
All right.
Okay, opening remarks. Cherry Blossom Festival coming up, the 27th, 28th, 29th. Real excited. I think we're gonna have blooms. Think we're gonna have blooms?
I don't know if we're going to have blooms. I make no guarantees, but we are, I'm down there whispering to the cherry trees on a regular basis, and the red buds seem to be coming out. I think this warm weather will help. The benches, I just drove by Blackburn, the benches are going in today, so that's gonna look nice. People have a place to sit down. You may see that there's coverage and ads that have been coming out, thanks to, I was remiss in not mentioning our good friends at the Brookhaven Post, who have been covering the festival from the beginning, and the cherry blossom trees, planting, et cetera. We appreciate that, their interest, and some more ads and stories have been coming out in the other media. So stay tuned for more information.
All right.
I have, the Georgia Power franchise.
Are you asking me to yield my, some of my time?
Yes, I'm like, ask for the yield.
Yes.
I had the pleasure to go to the Georgia Power Franchise Check Luncheon, where they actually invite all the cities to collect a check, the actual check for the year for the Georgia Power franchise fee. Is it okay to disclose how much the check was?
It's public record.
Yeah.
That's tacky.
No, it's not tacky, it's tacky.
So, they passed out a bunch of checks. The city of Brookhaven was handed a check, which I received on the behalf of the city of Brookhaven, for a little over $2 million. Took it straight here to City Hall and gave it to the Finance Department, and had them sign off that I had given it over to them. But they also had some really interesting announcements, that they are going to be rolling out in their service area, which is all of metro Atlanta and then outside of Georgia. But they're gonna be rolling out smart LED lighting for all of their streetlights. So our city will be able to contact Georgia Power, or we may have the access through their computer system, to be able to adjust lights on a per-light basis, that we can adjust, we can dim the lights, we can adjust hours, we can have specialty functions for these lights in our parks, if we've got an event that's gonna go later, we can do that. Plus, they will have a lot more, they'll be a lot more energy efficient, and they will have the ability to notify Georgia Power when they have a problem. So these smart lights are a nice addition that'll be rolling, they'll all be rolled out this year.
Do we have any opportunity for what style, or are they all gonna be the same?
Well, these are their existing streetlights.
Oh, they're just gonna take off the?
Yeah, they just changed the bulb, and I think put a microprocessor in there that somehow communicates back to them, but, so the answer to that is no. No changes.
All right. Thanks for the report, Bates.
Yep.
John, you have anything?
Joe?
No.
Okay. That's no sir, please. Upcoming agenda items, the discussion of the framework of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, City Attorney Tom Curry.
Before Mr. Curry makes his presentation, I'd like to advise the council that we will need to make an agenda announcement in the regular agenda meeting, and revise the agenda. We will need to revise the agenda and include a new business item, new business item L1, a resolution to approve the organization of the City of Brookhaven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And then we would renumber items 1, 2, and 3 on the regular agenda, to items 2, 3, and 4.
So we'll just make sure that somebody makes that motion.
Thank you.
So you're stepping in for Marie today, she's out of town?
Yes.
Welcome, Susan.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Just one, real quick, housekeeping item. On our regular agenda, Susan, the software doesn't show any kind of meeting notes for, or any agenda items. Is yours on your regular meeting? Mine's blank.
Mine's on my work session.
Well, so on the regular meeting, I noticed this online also, it seemed to be red, and maybe something hadn't been posted on it. Yeah, here.
But the work session is up, okay.
Yeah, work session's fine, it's just the regular meeting.
The regular?
The agenda packet and agenda are all there, so we could download it and see it, but...
Okay, I'll go have her to check into it while we're meeting on this one.
Susan, while I'm talking about that, so it's, L1 will be a resolution to approve the City of Brookhaven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and then number 1 becomes 2, 2 becomes 3, and 3 becomes 4.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We've prepared some draft bylaws for the City of Brookhaven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, which have been circulated for your review. There are a couple of items which I'd like to bring up and briefly run through with you. The number of members serving on this advisory committee will be nine members. They will be appointed for a two-year stagger term, with five of the members ending after year 1. I also wanted to bring to your attention that we added a provision that the bylaws shall be amended, subject to City Council approval. Do you have any, as well, there was a change made in Section 2.01, which stated that you must be, to be a member of this committee, you must be a resident of the City of Brookhaven, and has removed any kind of business owner from that as well. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, there was, there was a question on that, on this residence issue. You're gonna sanction our city attorney for that?
We have a holding cell, we can put him in.
So...
It's not my phone, it was not my phone.
So, the resident portion, we've talked, there's a line about the businesses in there, and I saw there was an article that was in the Post about that, and questions of should businesses be allowed, or business owners be allowed to be on this board?
Business owners residing outside the city. Their business is in the city.
But if their business is in the city, they'd be allowed, correct?
If I can answer that, I think in reality, we were crafting bylaws with respect to the, which we'll discuss at a later meeting, the CDB. And in that, we considered business owners could be, you know, as far as hotel owners or whatever, and I think that was, that was really just carryover from that part.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it may be a discussion that people wanna talk about, but I actually think that it's good to have business owners, I view them just as much as a citizen of the city. They've chosen to make an investment typically, or a lot of times, they are employing people in Brookhaven. They don't get an ability to vote, but, so I actually think it's very reasonable, and I think it's a good idea for us to allow businesses that reside in Brookhaven to be on this board.
I think, well, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to business owners within the city of Brookhaven being on a board in the city, but for the parks one, I think it would be, it's just not, I just don't think it's appropriate for the parks, and maybe for like the CDB, I think that might be something we need to consider. But for Parks Committee, I just wouldn't think it'd be, that's kind of more of a resident-centric, I mean, I know businesses might benefit from our parks, but I think that's a kind of a personal thing almost, I wouldn't...
Well, I mean, look at the North Ford Priestery Creek, I mean, potentially, a large number of users are gonna be the business employees on that linear park, going to and from, you know, their place of work and exercise during the day. I think that their involvement could actually benefit our parks by tying them more closely to, you know, aligning our interests together.
We're doing a separate committee for just the linear park, by the way. I wonder if you know that.
But I even think, you know, around here, I think all of your parks, you know, would benefit from business involvement, you know, I think that it's a way to get partnership from them.
Or maybe we could direct, we could direct the committee or the board to consult with businesses from time to time about what their needs or interests are.
I would agree with that. I think there's plenty of ways to partner with them and involve them, but I just think that since our taxpayers pay for the parks, that it ought to be our residents and taxpayers who serve on the advisory board.
Well, now, so our businesses pay more than our residents do in business licensing.
I just think...
It seems to be restrictive, you know, this, look, our current board proposed doesn't have any business owner representation there, non-residents, do they?
Not non-residents, but there might be business owners on it.
And so really, if you boil this down, the only difference would be, we're talking about, you know, if they're a resident, they already qualify, we're just talking about businesses that are business owners that are non-residents. You know, I, you know, to me, it is, it's creating a smaller pool, when ultimately the backstop on who the best qualified people are, is, are coming up here from this vote, from our mayor and council. So I default to allowing us to have the best pool of candidates to choose from, rather than a smaller pool. But, said my piece on it.
Piece finished, all right, go ahead.
So those were the changes that were made, which I wanted to bring to your attention, and are there any other questions?
The scope of their work, is there an advisory board, obviously?
Yes.
And defined there to consult with the Parks and Rec staff, correct?
Correct, the director.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, we've outlined several duties there, for example, to...
What section?
1.03, on page 1.
This is, okay, hold on. Sorry, I was on the code section. You're right.
But several of the items we have listed here are to research issues facing the parks, and to advise the director, to research matters of policy and administration, and provide recommendations, to research and review any kinds of investigations, reports, and items referred to the committee by either the director, the city manager, mayor, and council, and to provide any kind of recommendations regarding policies or ordinances related to the parks in the city of Brookhaven.
What about priorities?
No, there are no specific priorities.
I mean, no, I'm thinking about, when it comes to, I would like for the, for this board to have the ability to say, hey, we think this park needs this kind of infrastructure improvement. Is that covered under this, and then to advise the council quarterly on their work?
I mean, I think that falls within Section A of this, as to what you were asking, and as well, it also addresses to provide recommendations, so...
All right. Go ahead.
Does it spell out how often they meet, it just says, "Meet as needed," is that what I'm reading?
It says that the committee shall meet at such times as necessary as determined by the committee, and it goes on to say that the members must attend at least 2/3 of the meetings in a calendar year. I believe that we had taken that from some previous discussion.
Right, and we, what we have said in previous discussions, that they would meet quarterly, all right, and if they need to meet more than that, that's their, under their purview, but at a minimum quarterly. And then, does there language about reporting to the mayor and council? It says provide recommendations, but I would like a quarterly report.
Quarterly report.
Yes, to the mayor and council. I think that's a good idea.
It is.
Okay.
Who usually, who usually keeps minutes of these committee meetings?
I guess they would have to...
They select a secretary.
So in our MARTA CRB board, we elected a secretary and a president, and then the secretary's responsible for getting the minutes to the clerk, the city clerk.
Which is one of the members.
One of the members.
I think that for their quarterly meetings, they should have a clerk here, I think it should be recorded, and they should meet in this room.
It's come up in our MARTA CR...
I know, that's a, that's a committee.
Right.
This is, this is an advisory board with reporting duties to the council, so I think it should be, they should meet here, and they should have, for just four times a year, there, have a member of the clerk staff to come record.
To that point, this does address that all meetings of the committee shall be publicized, as are the meetings of mayor and council, and in keeping with the open record.
I'd like to track the planning commission, how the planning commission does its business, not necessarily their, all their procedures, but their, how they, how they meet and when they meet.
And then it goes on to say, as you had also mentioned, that all meetings shall be kept on file with the, with the city clerk.
All right. All right, thank you very much. We'll be announcing the appointments to that committee, to that board tonight. Is it called a board or a committee? It's called a committee, I thought it was gonna be called a board, but is there a difference in a board and committee?
It says board here.
We're calling it, this is Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
I'd use the term advisory committee, because in the City of Brookhaven ordinances, there's a specific section for advisory committees, and so that's why I use this name.
All right. All right. All right, land use permits, number 1 on E1.
Number 1, discussion of special land use permits, SLUP definition, Mr. Song will present. Basically, the language has been revised to preclude a restaurant, under certain parameters, from being considered a SLUP, and Mr. Song and Ms. Preston have evaluated a lot of language and come up with what's in your packets, so Mr. Song?
Thank you. If you recall from our last conversation, obviously, we wanted to make sure that any definition that we decide to amend within the zoning ordinance does not negatively impact restaurants, in particular. So I'll go ahead and just quickly read the memorandum that was provided to you, in terms of the definition of what we have currently, and what we're proposing as a revised definition. Currently, in our zoning ordinance, it states that late-night establishment means any establishment licensed dispense alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premise where such establishment is open for use by patrons beyond 12:30 a.m. And this is separate from the alcohol ordinance, it restricts them unless they apply for a special land use permit, to not be able to proceed in such a manner. What we're proposing in terms of the definition for late-night establishment reads as follows. Means any establishment which sells and dispenses alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, where food or full-service meal consumption is not the principal or predominant use of the establishment. By defining it in this manner, it would still account for, let's say, if the predominant business may be a bar, or a lounge, that may not be accessory to a hotel or to a restaurant use, it would still require them to come before a special land use permit, if they're found to be located within 1,500 feet of residential uses. So if, with the change in definition, it would still account for the protection over the residential areas, but also give the ability for the restaurants, that we're mainly considering, would be regulated by the current ordinances in place, the noise ordinance, as well as the alcohol, the alcohol ordinances.
Is there any issue with just saying the predominant or the principal use, is there generally a percentage attached to that?
There is, and the percentage is regulated by the alcohol ordinance, generally speaking, in order for a business to have the ability to sell alcohol on a Sunday, I believe, it depends on distilled spirits or beer, malt, liquor, but generally speaking, it's 50% of the gross revenue has to be accounted for by actual food, and not just by alcohol.
So would that apply here?
It would, because technically, this, what it's doing is just accounting for certain businesses to be sort of separate from, or be controlled not by the zoning ordinance, but to be controlled by the ordinance that we already have in place, again, the alcohol ordinance and noise. So they will still have to comply with those requirements of percentages in order to be able to sell alcohol on a Sunday, and those are the outlined percentages as defined in the alcohol ordinance.
So, in effect, we're doing away with the required SLUP, is that right?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
But again, it's accounting, and we still have nightclubs that are gonna be existing in terms of the zoning ordinance, requiring them to go through a SLUP. This would help to take into consideration other businesses that may be not traditionally defined as a restaurant. But it's gonna be rare that we would run into that situation because of the requirements that we have in place in the alcohol ordinance.
Okay, so, I'm just a little confused. So we're still gonna require that somebody who's predominantly a nightclub, that is within, what is it, 1,500 feet of residence, still has to get a SLUP?
Yes.
Okay, and this is just a way to say if you're probably the righteous room, or Pub 71, or Blind Dog, and you sell a lot of food, you're not considered a late-night establishment under those, under those rules?
That is correct.
Even though you might stay open late as a restaurant.
Right.
Right, but we'll let the alcohol ordinance regulate the hours of operation.
So, it seemed to me that where we didn't really catch this early on, was in the licensing, business licensing part of it, so is, this is all part of the business license definitions as well?
Well, now, what it does is, only in the zoning ordinance did it reference a 12:30 limit, in terms of where you could go, or if you were to go beyond that time, that you would have to get a special land use permit. The ordinance in itself, the alcohol ordinance, obviously, we amended that, or the council amended the hours. Generally speaking, well, I don't necessarily need to get into all the details, and I think, I don't wanna necessarily bog you down with additional information, but essentially, I think this would ideally resolve the situation that we're trying to avoid, and allowing for the alcohol ordinance to dictate the use, not dictate the use, but dictate the hours of operation, as it relates to those properties that deal with dispensing and consumption of alcohol on the property.
Okay.
Without getting involved, the zoning aspect, except for the idea of, is the proposed use appropriate for the zoning district, and not getting involved in terms of the whole aspect of what time, beyond what time are they actually engaging in serving of alcohol onsite?
My original concern was fairness.
Sure.
That, it seemed to me that for a period of time, we were treating different, same establishments differently, and putting some requirements on some and not on the other, so, do you feel like that clear, this clears this up?
Yes, and I think this also clears up the fact that we now no longer technically require anyone to verify what the hours of operations are on a business license. They're gonna be regulated by the alcohol ordinance, and it's clearly out there.
Okay, so it streamlines it a little bit.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
All right, number 2.
Number 2, the tree ordinance, standards for tree award, and Kay Ivanovich will discuss that with you. Before we do that, I'd like to introduce you to our newest team member, Seth Yerman. Seth, if you could just...
Hello?
Seth, among Seth's many qualities and experiences and attributes, he has a lot to offer the City of Brookhaven. Seth is also a certified instructor with the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission.
What's his job here?
Seth is the Development Services Manager. As you all know, Bennett was promoted to Director of Public Works. So Seth has big shoes to fill, but he has a lot of experience, and I wanted you to see Seth, and put a face with a name.
How do you spell your last name?
Y-U-R-M-A-N.
Okay, now my wife's gonna ask, are you related to the David Yerman jewelry guy?
This is my dad's second cousin.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, no discount, if I could, I'll let you know that.
So is that your claim to fame, Seth?
Yeah, it's about as close as I can get.
So, thank you.
Welcome.
So this is part of an incentive and recognition program, Kay?
We went ahead and worked on that Tree Preservation and Planting Award, and what you have an example of is that award to recognize builders and developers who have done an outstanding job of preserving trees, working their landscape, and also reducing erosion into our streams and storm waters. Requires the projects to be completed before they can be nominated, because of course, anyone can come up with a great plan, but we all know, implementation is what really counts. So that's what it covers, is finished projects that would be nominated by somebody, and then we can do that award for those individuals.
Is this subjective or subjective, these criteria, let's see?
Well, they pretty much are objective, so you submit a plan that succeeds the ordinance requirements, and you implement that plan as it's shown.
Right.
You preserve things as you're supposed to, and you go above and beyond in making sure that there's no erosion coming off your site, on top of it all, and then you plant back what you showed, to plant back in the numbers you're supposed to plant back. And you have a wonderful project at the end of it.
Did anybody look at the logo for the...
Yeah, it's cool. Thank you.
So this is just for a single price, they won't be like, get a seal of approval for, as a tree-preserved builder?
You could, you could add that, surely, I mean, you could give a certificate with this, you could give a plaque with this, however, we wanna come up with that, but this is the basis for the award to be issued.
I like what you did.
Thank you.
And there's no limit as to how many in each category could be awarded?
Right, I mean, if you had two or three different projects all going, and they were all completed, then you could be nominated for any or all of them.
Okay. So it's not something that, it's awarded for individual projects, but it's something that they can use in their marketing materials, as well, saying that they're an award?
Certainly, they can say they're a, you know, Brookhaven Tree Preservation and Planting Award winner.
Okay.
I think what we're also envisioning is, the actual logo could be utilized on their business cards, or some other marketing tool, which a lot of other companies do, just to represent that they have the credentials, depending on what, the type of criteria is that they met, depending on which award it may be. But in this specific case, I wanted to make clear that there's technically two awards.
Right.
There's a tree preservation award, and there's also a planting award, tree planting and landscaping, which is item number 2, in terms of the overall application. So again, we wanna make, we wanna state that, again, we would like for builders, developers to strive for both, and ultimately, that'll be the, you know, that's what we're looking for in terms of exemplary developments that are to be rewarded, the tree preservation award.
Is this something we have to vote on, or is this something that's done by the department, under their authority?
I don't necessarily believe, unless legal states otherwise, but I think it's a policy that we could implement moving forward.
All right.
Could you put up the logo, so people can see it?
The tree reminded me of Brookhaven Innovation Academy's logo, similar, that's a great logo.
All right.
Well, I hope it works, I must say, I spent the morning taking phone calls about complaints of runoff, tree clearing, erosion, we just have so much rebuilding going on, that it's hard to be, we just have to be so vigilant.
Yep.
Did you consider doing anything like a plaque for this?
Yes, you mentioned that.
Yeah, I did, I looked at several different styles of plaques, and I went ahead and saved a couple of them that I thought looked extremely nice, that weren't that expensive, so I did that, and...
We can do this starting tomorrow, I guess?
Pretty much, if somebody gets nominated, and we, you know, we're good with this format that we came up with.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe we'll look for the most cost-effective way of sort of presenting this award, be it a plaque, be it some type of electronic sort of tool that they could utilize, again, for their marketing purposes, maybe they could print it out into their business cards, but it's essentially, it's sort of a recognition aspect from us, and we recognize them as such, and that they could promote it, and promote themselves as, you know, a preservation award winner within the city.
All right.
Where do you expect the nominations to come from? Do you think it's gonna be self-nominated?
It could, it could really come from anywhere, the public, city staff, you know?
You see something impresses you, yeah.
I think at least putting out the standards out there, people could achieve for it in that way, it allows us to, when we're reviewing the plans, to see if they meet those criterias, and possibly, we can nominate them, it could come from the public, come from council, there's various methods of nomination that's possible here, and again, we're accounting for your larger subdivision, larger commercial developments, all the way down to your single infill development. And we wanna be able to recognize, you know, proper builders and developers in the city.
Rosemary, can you do a release or something about that, and put it on our website as well, just to let folks know, so that we can generate some interest in this, and get it rolling? I appreciate it, thank you.
And I think one thing that we didn't necessarily do, and I think it may be appropriate to do, is just make sure we get our communications department to vet the logo.
Okay.
So, we haven't had the chance to do that, but we'll go ahead and do that with Rosemary, before the press release goes out.
So, only thing I think about, it seems like the 2015's kinda small.
Yeah, I think what we were looking to do was, if it's the same builder, and they get nominated over the years, we could just continuously list out the years in which they were nominated and awarded, but that's just, we're still thinking of different ways to make this a valid effort for people to strive. valid effort for people to strive for.
So, my understanding is the real incentive to the developers, just recognition, and they get some marketing use of the logo. You may want to bring it up for suggestions at the Builder Summit or at the Brookhaven 101. You know, if you, if there are incentives that we can come up with that are reasonable, the city can, you know, that really drives these developers to want to strive for this more. I mean, I, I don't know that a plaque is enough incentive for them or not, but, but I'd like to open it up to get that feedback from them.
Right, exactly. You get a permit discount, 5%, 10%, something like that.
Yeah, or, you know, or on, somehow, your tree recompense, you know, might be reduced or something. But I think to open it up for suggestions from them, because we just want as many of our builders to be, to go after this award as we can, well, we do that through incentives.
Sure. Yeah, we'll definitely look into other methods of, you know, objective methods in which we could qualify appropriate candidates. And we'll look into incentives, and we've been working on incentives. We just, I think it's something that hasn't, wasn't work on the, listed in the work session, but it's something that we'll bring up to you. In addition to this, we do have other incentives. One quick note, Councilman Gaby, remember you mentioned about the bio squails and the harvesting, rainwater harvesting assistance? Actually, that's already implemented in our tree ordinance. It's an incentive to, the requirement for recompense of specimen trees.
Yep, reduces them by 50% if you use green infrastructure methods.
But I mean, some of the incentives are already worked in the ordinance overall, but we're going to look into additional incentives that we could share with the council.
Thank you all. Appreciate it, Kay, Ben. All right, number three, no, F1.
Other business, number one, it's a presentation on traffic calming devices. Mr. Richard Meehan will present the, I believe in one of your former meetings, you asked for some identification of traffic calming options. In your packet, you have a very lengthy exhibit, but I believe for purposes of the work session, Richard has condensed it. So, Mr. Meehan?
Yes, I'm just waiting for Susan to bring up the PowerPoint. Okay, on traffic calming, in the last work session, you had asked for, to go through a brief presentation on what some of the options were for traffic calming devices, other than speed humps, as that's what's been coming up with a couple of the traffic calming districts we've been looking at right now. Just going through on the, real briefly on the process, I'm not going to go in this, just, and it's covered in that draft policy that we have about the process a neighborhood has to go through. A lot of this is applying to roads that are 30 miles an hour or less, so this does not apply to roads that are over 35 miles an hour, or 35 miles an hour and above. They do have to submit an initial petition. We do a traffic study. If it meets the requirements, we'll get with the neighborhood, develop the plan for the traffic calming to be implemented. Then they'll do a vote on a final petition that requires 65% support from the neighborhood, because we're establishing a special tax district because of the $25 per year annual fee, and then it comes to the city council for the public hearing and approval. And with the traffic calming, what we're looking for is effective methods to reduce speeds. Most of the measures that we'll talk about are effective to reduce speeds, but they're not as effective reducing volume. So, one of the things we look at when deciding what to do is, is the issue with speeding in the neighborhood, or is the issue with the volume of traffic in the neighborhood? And speeds, for those that reduce speeds, there's basically two ways of doing it. Either have a vertical deflection or a horizontal deflection. The devices typically, we locate 250 to 500 feet apart, depending on the devices, depending on the speed in the neighborhood. And then we do have to, in a lot of cases, have to consider fire, police, EMS, school bus sanitation truck access as well, because that's important as well. Just briefly, it comes up, why don't we just put four-way stop signs up? Stop signs are effective for the orderly assignment of traffic right-of-way at an intersection, but they're ineffective at reducing speeds. They'll, and a lot of times, if you put in stop signs that aren't warranted, eventually, people will just start ignoring them and running through them, and there, then you have an issue with people not obeying the traffic laws properly. So, always stops should only be installed for volume reasons or to mitigate inadequate visibility. They should not be used to mitigate speed. And then the other issue comes up with road closures. I mean, that's got to be, special care has to be done, that to make sure we're not diverting traffic onto other roads, and that we're also maintaining access for emergency vehicles. Some of the, I'll start, as we go through these, these will go kind of more from simple to the complex. One of the simple ones we can do is lane narrowing. This is exactly what we just finished doing on Caldwell Road when we restriped it. So, we restriped it so that the travel, by putting stripes on the road, we actually made the actual travelway for vehicles narrower. And it can include, in this case, like we did on Caldwell, we can include bike lanes. And this can, you know, this has a, it's more psychological effect. By narrowing the travelway, it will psychologically affect people slowing down. Sometimes, it doesn't always work. People don't always consider the stripes as effective, and sometimes, they'll just ignore the stripes. But it has, generally, this has shown to be effective on roads like a Caldwell Road that was almost 40 foot wide for a two-lane road, which is really wide. This wouldn't be effective in some of the neighborhoods where our roads are only already 20 to 25 foot wide already. Turn lane movement prohibitions, this is as simple as putting up no left turn, no right turn signs. It can be an effective, effective from a cost standpoint, but it is an enforceable manner of preventing through traffic. Some of the drawbacks is this does apply to everybody, including the residents of the streets. And so, we, you know, we can talk with chief about that, but, you know, if we assign that to be enforced, he's going to have to enforce it with everybody, have his staff enforce it with everybody. No passes just because you live on the street. And it's only as effective as active enforcement. So, that puts a big burden on the police department to have to enforce it. If they're not able to enforce it, then a lot of times, people can ignore it, and the more it gets ignored, you know, it won't get used as much. Another passive method is radar devices. This is one we're already using with the temporary speed trailers. You know, and use the devices to measure and display the vehicle speeds. This has been shown to help, the studies we've done with before and after using both the temporary trailer and the permanent ones have shown that it does, is effective in reducing speeds. One of the advantages of this method is it can be used on any road, even roads with 35 and 45 mile an hour. Some of the drawbacks on the temporary one is it's only good as effective as it's there and working. And so, when it's not there and not, or not connected, then there's, it's not as effective as reducing speeds. And we can use these, there is a permanent version that we can buy and use. They run about, run between $6,000 and $8,000 per location to install. Speed humps, of course, is one that we use, that we use quite a bit right now. Typically, they're the 22-foot long with the six-foot ramps on either side and 10-foot tops. They are effective in reducing speeds, and they, they can fit within, usually within the existing roadway, and they, and they can be designed so they don't pose restrictions to bicycles. We cannot use them on steep roads. There is an increase in traffic noise, and, you know, with the discomfort to the drivers as well, and they can have some impact on emergency vehicles. There's another, speed cushions. These, we don't use, and I really don't recommend using them. I bring them out just there. They're, they're basically prefabricated speed humps. Aesthetically, they're not pleasing. I mean, they do the same thing. They're really there that they, you can have it so that they set them so that the wheel path of the emergency vehicles go around them, but they're basically black rubber bumps, almost like you can see in a parking lot. They're not real, they're not, wouldn't fit aesthetically with the roads in, in the city. Intersection humps, this is a more, this is something that can be used at intersections. Basically, it's a speed table that's around an intersection. I won't go too much into that, but it's something that's more, can be done aesthetically, and in certain areas within certain neighborhoods, it's something that can be done at an intersection, especially one that may not qualify for an always stop because of traffic volumes. Roundabouts, this is another thing that can be done at intersections, especially ones where an always stop does not meet the warrants. It can help effective in, with safety, as well as reducing speeds at the intersection. It cannot be ignored like stop signs can. The drawback, some of the drawbacks on cost, potentially could impact outside the curb lines, depending on the intersection. You might have to take some property from the corners, and it could have an impact on buses and trucks and emergency vehicles. Splitter islands, we have used these on West Nancy Creek. There's a few on Caldwell as well. These, these are probably the most other effective alternative other than speed humps. They do reduce speed on the road with lateral deflection. They can provide, they can be more aesthetically pleasing as we can provide areas for landscaping. They, in certain cases, like on Harts Mill where we used it, it can provide locations for safe mid-block pedestrian crossings, and they are allowed on steeper grades. That, some of the disadvantages is it can create an obstruction for potential conflicts, especially with pedestrians. The maintenance, there is some increased maintenance costs because of the landscaping. Typically, in the roads we have, it requires widening the road to be able to put these in. That's what they ended up doing on West Nancy, which adds to the cost, and depending on how much right-of-way we have, may or may not be possible. On some of the roads, the other issue we get with is driveways. If the driveways aren't spaced far enough apart, it makes it real difficult to put the, there's no room to put the splitter islands in. And like I said, they're not as pedestrian-friendly unless the road already has sidewalks on it, because the pedestrians that walk along the road have no place to go. They're kind of stuck within the island. If a vehicle comes along, there's not enough room for the pedestrian and the vehicle to pass through. It's not as much a problem with bicyclists, because they can usually go through, they're going through usually at a higher speed. Chicanes, this is another kind of variation where basically by adding kind of bump outs along the road, you can divert the path of the vehicle, basically make it so they're, especially work on a straight road to where the vehicles don't have to, where, they can't just take a straight shot. They have to deflect their path of travel. Usually, it would be a series of two or three of these along a road. They do reduce speeds, have minimal impact on emergency vehicles. You can use them on steep grades. We can build them within the limits of the roadway, and they don't pose restrictions for bicycles. Some of the drawbacks to them, existing driveways can limit their placement, especially on roads that have a lot of driveways. They can create obstructions to collisions. You have cars coming in opposite directions, one's going to have to yield to the other. For that as well, they can have some impact on pedestrian safety. They're most effective on roads where you have two-way volume. If most of the volume and most of the speeding is in one direction, then a car is not going to be, they can kind of weave their way through, I guess, the chican without having to slow down, but if they know there's oncoming traffic, then that's where they're effective in slowing cars down. And they may pose problems with, issues with drainage, depends on how you build the chicanes themselves. Neckdowns, enclosures, or chokers are a similar version of that, where basically, you put the islands on both sides opposite each other to narrow the road down to one lane. A lot of the pros and cons are the same as they are for the chicanes. And so, one-way, some of these last ones get into more with the restricting movements. One-way entry and exit, this is more to effect for volume changes, not as much speed changes. They're, it's similar to the choker treatments, except you're doing it at an intersection. And, but some of the other issues is, it may relocate, biggest issues may relocate traffic to other roads. It's going to inconvenience local residents, have to drive different paths to get in and out of their neighborhood. And it's easy to violate, you know, it's only good as enforcement that's there. We have this in the modified intersections, it's another version of this where we just restrict the turning movements at intersections to either right in, right out, right out only, right in only. This is what's used over, if you're over on Sunland and Caldwell. They have that where you have, you can only turn right out of, I think, Sunland onto Caldwell. You cannot turn left in or left out. They are effective at reducing volumes when they're enforced or when you're able to enforce them. I know the one, we have an issue over there where we have complaints that a lot of people just ignore it, and I know the, our police department has written numerous citations on that one already. So, and again, one of the issues with this is this is more to address volume, not speeds, and the issue there is that where are you relocating that volume to? Is it going to a different road? Are you increasing the volume on another road by reducing volume on that road? And I believe that's a real quick look at them, sorry. And welcome any questions you may have. Go back and look at anything you.
I just had a question about, somebody sent us a video the other day of cut-through traffic, I believe it's on Brookhaven Road, and I suspect, if I understand that street, that it actually come, it's coming in off of, through, from the city of Atlanta, because you're very close to the city line there. I, I don't know that there's any way to restrict or work with, do you have any experience working like with another municipality where you do some project like that to restrict traffic cutting through neighborhoods?
You could. I mean, the question would be with, and I'm assuming we're dealing with West Brookhaven Drive, or I mean, I think, between West Brookhaven and East Brookhaven Drive. I mean, that gets difficult because of the, just the size of the neighborhood that that serves. You know, where do you cut it off? And that's, and still maintain the access for the residents of the neighborhood. And having to work across jurisdictional boundaries makes it more difficult, because if we do it on the city of Atlanta side, you could be dumping more traffic onto the Brookhaven side or vice versa. If we do it on our side, you're dumping traffic onto other roads, maybe Club Drive or some other road. So, it's not, the diversions in the closing of roads is one of the most difficult ones to do, because it's by helping one person, or one neighborhood, or one street, you're really probably going to impact significantly a different street.
It's a, that, that, that video is, is very evident of something they deal with every single, just about every day, particularly on Thursdays, Fridays. But, I think it wouldn't make sense for the city of Brookhaven to work with city of Atlanta if a store of Brookhaven is interested in a comprehensive traffic study, because I actually contend that most of that traffic, I mean, you look at the density in there, and it's, it's not dense. You know, it's one of our least dense areas in Brookhaven. It's that cut-through traffic from Johnson's Ferry 285 area is using Johnson's Ferry in city of Atlanta. They're either taking Windsor Parkway to cut across, or they're taking, or they're going through historic Brookhaven on the number of different avenues. And the reality is, you know, nobody in those neighborhoods wants those people just to use their streets as cut-through. They need to go down to continue Johnson's Ferry, go down to Peachtree Road, and then use that arterial to get, get out of here. So, it may be something that we can look to, to do. That's, that is a very big neighborhood, but I agree, we're only, we're not even half of that.
No, we're actually looking at, I'm looking at the map right now, we're actually less than half of that neighborhood. You know, like I say, under our policy that we have, any neighborhood that wants us to investigate it, all they need to, they can contact us, we can give them the forms, and all it requires is signatures of 20% of the residents of a street for us to initiate the studies.
Yeah, I actually think that, that city of Atlanta would want to cooperate on their side also. So, that might be something I'd point them to, to, to do that. But, we are, you know, we're going to continue to see problems with that Peachtree Road access from, from Brookhaven Drive, because it all funnels right down on that one exit point at the traffic light, and the traffic light timing is, it's unbearable. You know, if you're in that historic Brookhaven, you've got, you might get 10 cars through, but you've got a line of 50 cars, so you're just.
You're trying to balance Brookhaven Drive with, how much do you hold up Peachtree Road?
Well, if there was any way to be able to create that signal so it's just one light at Dresden and, and Brookhaven Drive.
It's actually, you can't because of the site distance. Coming across Brookhaven Drive and Dresden, you have to do what they call split phasing there, because you can't see, if you're on Dresden, you can't see the cars coming out of Brookhaven Drive. If you're on Brookhaven Drive, you can't see the cars coming out of Dresden, so they have to do the split phasing. I do know that that intersection, along with all the others on Peachtree, are scheduled to get the flashing yellow arrows sometime later this year. GDOT is going to be there, working through the process of getting those approved, to get those installed. At, GDOT's going to install them. At, GDOT's going to install them. And what that will allow from the signal engineers that coordinate that road is it will allow for a slightly different phasing, which will actually allow for more efficiency of that intersection, which should help all the movements.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you look at the changes in streetscape on Buckhead and the, and the Buckhead CID and the, the change that made in getting traffic through that area is tremendous. I mean, it's a noticeable change. And I believe there has to be a way that we can do a similar thing here in Brookhaven. So, and in light of the MARTA development coming up, you know, having those, I think that we, we need to have a traffic study done on the Peachtree Road corridor so that we can tell those MARTA developers what our expectations are with, with real knowledge.
That, and actually as part of where that will be a DRI, that's actually will be a requirement on MARTA developers to prepare the traffic study.
Do we know if that's going to be a DRI?
Based on the, well, I think the thresholds that I've seen, I haven't seen the latest master, based on what the master plan that they were floating, it will meet the requirements for a DRI. If not, at least we've been discussing with the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission requirements, threshold levels for, for traffic study requirements. And that development would probably meet our, at least the city minimum requirements and policies we're starting to implement for a traffic study before King Gumbo is owning, or that's part of the zoning application. So.
Every traffic study I've seen developers do just say, well, we're adding 50 cars to the road. That's it.
Well, this one will be a lot more, and they'll have, they'll have a lot stricter requirements for the size that they have on that. And come up with some solutions and recommendations.
Thanks, Richard. Am I held seven?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. It's my perception that with the interchange improvement that we made at Ashford Dunwoodie and Johnson Ferry Road, which from what I hear and the feedback I get is really making a big improvement. And so what I'm, what I'm seeing, because I drive this every day, is that the cut-through traffic on West Nancy has diminished considerably. And I believe the cut-through traffic on Bubbling Creek has diminished because people are not having to try to avoid Ashford Dunwoodie Road, et cetera. And the, and the road is moving. So it seems to me that really our, our goal, as Bates was saying, is to keep our main thorough fairs moving as quickly as possible so people aren't cutting through neighborhoods.
Right.
Because it's faster. If Peachtree is moving, if Ashford Dunwoodie is moving, if Johnson Ferry is moving, you don't need to be cutting through these, through these neighborhood streets. So, so you would agree with that?
I would, I agree. And that's why usually I tell residents too, when they come, like, that's why I've told the people in Bubbling Creek on West Nancy, is let us focus on the arterial improvements. That will do more to cut out traffic calming than trying to block roads, close roads, speed, you know, it doesn't address necessarily the speeding issue, but it at least address some of the volume issues is usually related to improving the arterials.
So my question then is, it was my understanding that we were going to launch a, you know, more of a laser-focused traffic study on Ashford Dunwoodie Road from 285 down to Peachtree, and probably then another one on Peachtree. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I've already been talking with the city manager about that. I mean, was, it was in our plan to do this year. We hadn't set a specific timeline, but talking with the city manager over the past week, we're going to start moving that RFP along to get, you know, to start that process. But that isn't our plans for this year.
But it hasn't been put out for bid yet?
Not yet. We've had a couple others, we're trying to get wrapped up before we put another major RFP on the street.
But what's the deadline on when that RFP will go out for those studies?
I'm still coordinating with the city manager. We just started talking about it on the end of last week, and we had not set a hard date on the Ashford Dunwoodie study yet, but.
Let's do, go ahead and set a, I mean, is a month for the RFP to go out? Is that?
One thing we had talked about though, before we did that, because we had talked about the turn lane at Montgomery, is that we were going to get the RFP out for the design of the turn lane on Montgomery in, prior to doing the one for the bigger study, because we want to get that designed done for that Montgomery turn lane first.
That's just restriping, right?
No, there, this is, that's, we're talking about the right turn lane, not the left. The left turn lane is just restriping that, we're just waiting for some good weather. We're talking about the right turn lane northbound to design that.
It doesn't inhibit getting the RFP ready for the traffic study though, does it?
No, it's, it's just more function within the staff. We got a lot of RF, and I'm not going to speak for the purchasing department, but we've got a lot of RFPs and, you know, we can only manage the RFP process on so many at one time. And that's just, we're stacking them up right now, going through it. I'm just coordinating with the city manager and our purchasing department to.
How about by the next meeting, you give us a deadline for the traffic study on Peachtree and Ashford Dunwoodie to Peachtree? Because that Peachtree study would take in the Druid Hills and Dresden.
Right, well, the Peachtree one, there's a different one, is there's, we actually have the LCI grant for Peachtree Road project. And that has, that money is slated to be notice proceed from the state starting in November. So that one, we'll have to have a consultant on board and have that started, ready to go the first of November when we get the go-ahead from the state. So that includes, that's going to include a traffic study and a detailed analysis as part of that LCI project.
Why do we have to wait till November? Why does the state wait till November?
It's just when the funding is available from the state.
Well, can we go ahead and do it and then just get reimbursed by the state?
No, we cannot. It is a reimbursement of project, but the way that state and federal funding works is we cannot do any work, where, any work that's done before the state authorizes us to do the work is not reimbursable.
So the authorization comes in November, or the money comes in?
The authorization comes in November, right now on the schedule.
It's one of the things we talked about from the MARTA Citizen Way Review Board is, is that, you know, the MARTA's timeline is, is going to impact a lot of these issues that we're dealing with. We know that by the end of the year, they will have a developer selected. You know, they, they've already gone through their RFQ, now they're going to be releasing the RFP, I understand, on the 23rd or 24th of this month. They'll have their, their developer selected. I think they're looking to do that by the end of June, or maybe early July. And that developer is going to hit the ground running, you know, with, with developing their plans from July till the end of the year, and possibly submitting plans into the city by the, in December. Knowing, you know, from the, and they're going to have those meetings with the city about, look, what do we need to do? I think that knowing from a traffic standpoint, what we're going to require is really important. So we've got from July until December while they develop those plans before they submit.
Well, and like I said, the requirements are, part of the development requirements are that they perform the traffic study and prepare.
Here's the only thing, issue I have, I mean, waiting to November, I mean, this puts us into probably into 2016 before, that's, that's, that's an issue for me. I don't know if y'all agree, but we, you know, we want to do traffic studies now, we want to start them now, get the process going now, so that our residents have and we have a sense that there's going to be a solution to the traffic problem we have at Druid Hills, Peachtree, Dresden, Peachtree, Ashford Dunwoodie, Peachtree, and Ashford Dunwoodie, West Nancy Creek, and 285. So, that being said, I want you to explore, please, but by the next meeting, a timeline for when these RFPs will go out and when they expect the studies to begin. And then B, alternatives to waiting for the state money to come in in November for the Peachtree study.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
Does anybody have any comments or questions about that?
Yeah, and I, I know that, I've talked with Marie about some LCI update and ARC funding for the Peachtree corridor. So, you know, I think she's, she's, she understands this issue of having, having those other funding sources, but also the need that we have to do this now.
Yeah, I think there's also a requirement that we have to update the LCI study this year, which is separate from the state grant project. It's, they're different, they're both LCI, but they're different projects.
What is this, what are the parameters of this specific grant from the state? What does it say?
It's, for, basically first, they call it, well, it's really sidewalk and streetscape improvements from North Druid to Ashford Dunwoodie is what the grant is for. But it includes, part of what the scope includes is analyzing traffic and looking at even road dieting or, you know, configurations on Peachtree Road itself.
It's not a standalone traffic study on how to make, okay, well then, let's not hold up the traffic study for sidewalks and streetscaping, if that's the focus of that study. Let's get an RFP for traffic issues on Peachtree with Druid, Dresden and Druid Hills. Let's get that, I'd like a plan for that if you, if you, because we get, we, we sit in the traffic, we hear from our residents about the traffic, and I don't want to hear, and I'm sure they don't want to hear, that they're going to be waiting to 2016 before we got a study about what to do about, which will make it 2017 before anything gets done.
Well, and there's nothing that should be holding up the Ashford Dunwoodie study, right?
Right, no.
Right, it's just more timing on staff, staff timing.
I was really hoping it was going to be launched in the first quarter, but.
That's what I was figuring as well, so.
Okay. Can we review one more time to be more, and be very specific with the areas that are to be considered here?
Yeah.
You had mentioned.
Ashford Dunwoodie, 285, West Nancy, West Nancy Creek, Peachtree.
I mean, Peachtree, Peachtree or you?
Where Ashford Dunwoodie hits Peachtree. All right, and then Peachtree, Dresden, and Druid Hills.
Druid Hills to where?
Well, the intersection there at Druid Hills and Peachtree. And then, you know, if you're, I guess you're thinking about the bottleneck down there at Roxborough.
I definitely am.
Yeah, well, let's, let's.
There'd be, well, in that one, we're, I'll let you know right now, what we're doing down at Roxborough, we've already, we're actually working on re-timing the traffic signals down there right now. That's in progress. And then there's also working with the state, once the Buford Highway project finishes, they'll be actually doing some improvements at the Buford Highway corridor part, which all that work in conjunction to help try to alleviate, just through time, better timing of signals through that corridor.
Well, I think.
And that's already progressing.
I think that area needs to be, that is the big bottleneck. I mean, it's not necessarily getting from, at Druid Hills and Buford Highway, the bottleneck is at the, at the split there.
Right.
And so, I would like to see that one, an RFP.
Well, like I said, we've already, we're already working on the signal timing on that, and we should.
Yeah, but is that a traffic study to figure out what kind of lane improvements we can make?
Well, it's, it's seeing if you can make the improvements with signal timing.
Okay.
And see what, and then evaluate what the signal timing improvements are. And then we can determine if, depending on how those work, what the, if additional stuff is needed with laneage.
All right, just sort of schedule on all those items for the next meeting, please.
Well, what's, what's the usual amount of time it takes to assess the impact of timing changes only?
I mean, usually you can see, usually you'll see immediate impact once they go in. I mean, you'll, you know, you can look at Ashford Dunwoodie Johnson's Ferry, I mean, within two weeks, you could see the, you could assess the changes based on.
Well, we see it, but my question is, is there an official time period that's usually set aside?
As far, I mean, if we're looking at doing road changes, adding lanes or something like that, other than just doing. I mean, we would be able to tell within a couple months. We, you know, part of it's doing before and after analysis. And so usually we would do within probably about a month, within a month after making the timing changes, we would analyze the traffic compared to the before to see what level, how much improvement the timing changes have made.
Okay. Thirty days.
John?
Just going back to the, your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
So is that basically the presentation you give to the citizens when they ask for a speed study and?
Yeah, not as formal, but it's more informal discussions. And when I present ideas about, based on their specific, is if the issue is speeding or volume, and, and once they qualify, what options they have as far as to address their specific need.
And they're, and they're pretty much, last two times I've seen, they're picking speed bumps.
They want speed, yeah, they've said, we want speed bumps. And we do have another one, Green Meadows Drive is, their, their final petition is in, and we're trying to schedule the public hearing for that one probably in April to come before y'all on that one. So there's another, there's another one in the pipeline. And those are the, the one we're voting on, y'all will consider tonight. And then Green Meadows are the only two that are at that stage, right, beyond the design stage right now.
And no, no one wants radar signs? The, we don't, I don't see any in the city.
No, they haven't requested them yet. We talked about briefly last year. You know, I have seen locations where the radar signs are going to be most effective because of their cost are going to be more on roads that are 35 miles an hour and 45 miles an hour. So along Dresden or Osborne, those, those are roads that will be more effective in having the radar signs. You're not going to use them on a Green Meadows or, you know, there may be some cases if it's a residential street or a neighborhood street that's next to a school or a park, you might consider using it. But from the cost that, for each radar sign, they're not real effective on neighborhood streets.
Okay. And one, one last question about Canmont in particular tonight. I got a message from a resident there saying that they're doing a lot of work on that street, and there's a lot of metal plates there.
Okay.
Would we wait until that is all cleared up before we put in the speed bumps or?
We would, we would, and we'd work around, you know, we're not going to put in, speed bump in when there's a metal plate, and we'd coordinate with any other construction that's out there.
Thank you, Richard. Be regular meeting agenda review.
The first item on the pre-regular meeting agenda review would be the public hearing item, a resolution providing for the installation of traffic calming devices on Skyland and Canmont Drive, and the assessment of the annual cost of maintaining and operating said traffic calming devices against abating property. This is a required public hearing. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Mahan?
So this is a petition that has already been fulfilled by, what is it, 65%?
They have, the 65% of the residents have voted in favor of doing the speed humps. This is the, this will be for the final approval of the resolution in the special tax district. This will be a public hearing. We are, I'm anticipating there'll be several residents from the neighborhood that will come and speak in favor. I'm not aware of any opposition that will be here. I do know there were two that should be in your agenda package, two emails were received in favor of the speed humps.
And I take it you worked with them on the placement?
Yes.
To me, early on, we had some people who were concerned about it was near their driveway or not near their.
That was more in the Apple Valley one. This one, we haven't had that issue. And, and between what's on the plan and what we actually put on the ground, I mean, there is still some flexibility to adjust on, based on final driveway and locations and everything.
Next?
Next item is item E, mayor's opening remarks.
Okay.
Item F, agenda announcements, that would be the place where the agenda would need to be amended. Public comment. Item H, consent agenda, two sets of minutes. Item I and J are announcements and reports and presentations. I'm unaware of, well, under reports and presentations, we have two items. Number one, recognition of Gary Friedman with Adventure Foods. And then item two is with Chief Yandura making commendations for the police department.
Okay.
K is old business, L is new business. Again, an amendment to the agenda with a new L1, resolution to approve the organization of the City of Brookhaven Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Item one, that becomes number two. The wording should probably change and say appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, not Board.
Okay.
And then item three, new item three would be the approval of the ordinance to amend Article III of Chapter II, administration of the City of Brookhaven to restate Section 2-21 in its entirety to designate the establishment of departments in the city and as so stated herein. And this will require public comment. And then the new item four would be the appointment of the independent auditor, which is an action item.
Regarding the department ordinance, there's a little clause there about changing it. They want to have it on the March 16th, so that would be a deferral to the March 16th meeting.
Okay.
That's correct. And also, it says to be heard on the March 16th, 2015 special called Work Session. I believe also it should be identified as a council meeting and work session.
All right.
Moving on to item M and O, P and Q. M is other business. I'm not aware of any, unless the council has some other business. Public comments, mayor's comments, executive session. I don't know whether we need an executive session after the regular meeting. I haven't been advised.
No.
Okay. And then, so we're back to the regular, we're back to the work session agenda.
If I could just make one comment, by virtue of the fact that we have moved public hearings to the beginning of the meeting, and that some, in some instances, those public hearings take quite a while. And where we are making commendations by the chief or his officers. take quite a while, and where we are making commendations by the chief or his officers, we tend to keep them out of the, out of the, off the streets for a period of time that we should consider, either this evening and in the future, that where you have these public hearings, go ahead and move those to the front.
Right, got it.
I agree.
All right.
So back to the work session agenda?
I think it's, I think that's the last item on it, wasn't it? We have executive session, I don't have any announcements, somebody has any announcements, I don't think. And I think we do need an executive session, is that right?
To discuss litigation.
Right. All right, is there a motion?
You want a motion for me? Everybody's looking at me.
Nobody wants to go.
I make, I move that we, uh, move to executive session to discuss one litigation matter?
That's right.
Or just litigation matter?
Just one.
Just one.
There's two, I want, there's another one to discuss.
Second litigation, two litigation matters. I amend my move, my motion.
You get it all in?
What if yours is lighter, the same?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll be back in two hours.
Aye.
All opposed? Regent, all right.
My move is to adjourn the work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned the work session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, regent.